Good evening, everyone. I'll read the opening announcement. Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on May 17, 2017 to the Home News Tribune and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall, 78 Byard Street, New Brunswick. Roll calls in.
Mr. Hosh.
Here.
Mrs. Sedowski.
Here.
Mrs. Seawood. Mrs. Shukaius. Mrs. Solis.
Here.
Mr. Spencer. Mr. Morella. Miss Morella. Mr. Ortiz.
Here.
Dr. Caldwell.
Here.
We have a call.
Excellent, thank you very much. Dr. Johnson, would you lead us to the flight solo? Ready, smoke?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll now turn it over to Dr. Johnson for some very exciting presentations.
Good afternoon. Wow, what a wonderful turnout. It's great to see our students and administrators and our teachers and our parents here tonight. And thank you so much for coming out this evening. Very special to us to know that you are here with us to recognize and celebrate the success of our children. We will start that pretty soon. However, what I do want to do is recognize two board members. On behalf of the New Jersey School Boards Association and the Middlesex School Boards Association, they would like to thank Ms. Patricia Sedowski and Ms. Irma Seawood for twenty years of service to the children of New Brunswick, and they have sent a plaque for you.
They started serving when they were fifteen, right? Okay, I have a special privilege now to invite the Sister Cities Hungary Trip presentation. If they would present before the audience in the board. It's special because my daughter is one of the people who has. Good evening. Can you all hear me? Good evening. My name is Michael Talwin. I'm the Director of Sister Cities of New Brunswick. For those of you who don't know, Sister Cities is an international program that was started in 1956 by Dwight Eisenhower. He called for exchanges between Americans and people of other nations to encourage the development of long-term relationships that create mutual understanding, respect for other cultures, their history, language, and customs, which is extremely important in today's world. Sister Cities developed and manages programs that bring reciprocal benefits and establishes friendships and provides enriching experiences through education with a focus on student exchanges. Our first New Brunswick Public School exchange was in 1986. These students who appear before you are from Woodrow Wilson. They had the good fortune to go last spring to Debruson, and they'd like to talk a little about their experience. I'll let Erin.
Good evening. My name is Erin Eckert. This is Ashley, Levana, and Shado. We will, the four kids that were chosen from Woodrow Wilson to go to the Hungary trip. Now we're going to show them. When we went over into Hungary, the first thing that our host family said was accept us right away. The way that these school systems work was very different from our own. They had very much respect for their teachers and stood up when the teacher entered their room. When we were over there, they had took us to a water park, and unfortunately, I had hurt my knee a couple days before, and they had hoped with that. The way that they learned how to speak English in their English class was learning how to watch the movies and learning vocabulary that way. My host family had accepted me as one of their own children, and my host family's child, his name is Chris, and that's his sweet name is Ashley.
Jó Nákró. That's how you say hello in Hungarian. My name is Ashley Caldwell, and I'm truly thankful for this wonderful opportunity to go to Hungary. I learned many things, not only, not only like the language, I also learned about their food and their culture. And as Erin said before, I loved how they stood up for their teachers when they came in. And thank you, I was so happy to represent the U.S. and the New Brunswick Public Schools.
Hello, everyone. Hope everyone's having a nice evening. My name is Levania Velasco, and I had the wonderful opportunity to go to Hungary. Our sister city is Debruson, which I had the privilege to explore. I fell in love with Hungary through its food, culture, schools, people, attraction, and its history. I enjoyed the first day in Debruson. I remember I was so nervous to meet my Hungarian family, and when I did, I felt very safe and comfortable. I love learning about the country's history. For example, the Pajay's Church, it was so beautiful. And while the schools don't have UNO One, but I love their programs and their ways of teaching. For example, there's art programs, they have two swimming classes per week, they have computer science, they even have dance class. The people are so kind, and the places are gorgeous. I remember the streets were very detailed and architected. I admire Hungary a lot. I'd like to thank everyone and everyone.
Good evening. My name is Shado. I had the best experience in Hungary. It was the best because I learned very different cultures they had, the buildings and everybody when they were there. I learned how great people acted and how intriguing when I first came. My oldest family name was Gina, and she showed me around, she showed me around her house and the place it was. She had a garden with strawberries, and she had a big house. Thanks to her, I learned how great Hungary was, and I had the best experience ever. Thank you.
On behalf of the board, we are so grateful for the Sister Cities program that sets the New Brunswick Public Schools apart. I am so proud when I tell folks from other school districts that we send students to Hungary, Japan, Ireland. I don't know any other district that does that, so each of you should be very proud that you're in a district that does that kind of extraordinary stuffs, thanks to Sister Cities program. So the next item is the review of the PARC data. So before we do that, I, you know, everybody hears this term PARC, and people don't know what it stands for. It really stands for the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers. And this auditorium is filled, as you'll hear, because of the scholars that we have in this district. And the thing about PARC is that it is a test that indicates that if you do well on this test, you are one of the best students, not just in the state, but one of the best students in the nation. So we're going to hear the report on PARC. I'll try to relate to Dr. Johnson.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Now, my task here tonight is really twofold. So first, I'd like to start by presenting the PARC data to all of you, but then we have some very special students to recognize, as Dr. Caldwell spoke about, and you may very well have one of these special students sitting next to you tonight. So before we get started with the presentation, I'd like to start the way that we start all of our presentations, and that's really to remind us of our district's vision statement. And this vision statement is really the why, the why we do what we do, the why we're all here today, and that is to prepare, empower, and inspire lifelong learners and leaders. So those of you who aren't familiar with the PARC assessment, this is an assessment that students have been taking for the past three years. And students take this assessment in both English Language Arts, which we refer to as ELA, in grades three through eleven, and also in math, in grades three through eight. And they take end-of-course assessments in Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. Now, starting this year with our class of 2018, PARC is going to be used as one of three graduation requirements. Now, just a few weeks ago, administrators, parents, and students received a report talking about your PARC score or their performance level. And the score that you received looked very similar to what I have up on the screen here. And it's divided into five different levels, and it's color-coded with these different shades of purple. And we know that Level One are students who did not yet meet expectations. And when I'm referring to expectations, I'm referring to expectations for end-of-the-year standards in either English Language Arts or Math. Those students who reached Level Two partially met these expectations. Level Three approached the expectations. And Levels Four and Five were students that we would refer to as having a passing score. Level Four, the students that met the expectations. And Level Five are those students who exceeded those expectations. Now, we're going to look at several different pieces of data tonight. First, we want to look at our results from 2015, the first year of our PARC assessment, to this past spring when the students most recently took the assessment, in 2017. We want to look at the progress of the students meeting and exceeding the standards. Student cohorts, which means those students who, for instance, started taking the assessment in third grade, what their scores looked like in fourth grade, and then again in fifth grade. So we were able to track those students for three years now. And then finally, we want to compare our school district to the state data. So the first piece of information, I know this slide is very overwhelming, and across the top you can see that there are the five levels listed before you, and going down the left-hand side lists the grade levels from grade three through eleven. Now, this slide is for English Language Arts. As I said, students' grades three through eleven, and this shows the progress of students in each grade across three years, so for year 2015, 2016, and 2017. Then, this allows us to look at the trends across the growth in two years and three years. Now, I'm going to make this slide a little easier to see, and what I've done here is I've taken Levels Four and Five, which we considered our passing scores. Now, remember, we're looking at English Language Arts here, and we can look at the growth trend over two years and over three years. So you can see that over the past two years, when we look at third-grade students, we can see that they had grown seven percentage points, and when we look at them over three years, they've grown eight percentage points. Students in grades four have gone up one percentage point in two years, and in three years, they have gone up six percent. Grades five, over two years, we have students that have gone up twelve percent. So over three years even, these students in fifth grade have gone up twelve percent. Grade six, for two years, they've gone up six percent. The same for three years. So for the past two years in seventh grade, we've seen an eight percent growth. In three years, we've seen a ten percent growth. Now, when we get to eighth grade, in two years, we have seen a twelve percent decrease. Over three years, that was a three percent decrease, and the English standards for eighth grade, we're actually looking at middle school right now, and we're beginning to rewrite some of that curriculum. So we know that from these scores, this is an area that we're focusing in on. Now, in ninth grade, we didn't see an increase over two years, but over three years, we did go up four percentage points. In tenth grade, over two years, we went up five percentage points, and in three years, we went up eleven percentage points. Now, the grade eleven, ELA, over two years, we saw a two percent growth, but over three years, we saw a four percent decrease. But you could see that the number of students who were meeting and exceeding expectations was one of the highest across the district, at thirty-six percent this year. Now, this slide is one of the most interesting slides that you'll see tonight, because for the first time, we're able to look at cohorts of students, as I explained earlier, and see that when they start in a particular grade, that same group of students that moves up from one year to the next, what their scores look like. So this is where we want to see, are these students progressing each year? So if you look across the top column, we have the different grade-level cohorts. So for instance, in the first column, you'll see grades three through five, and so forth as you go to the right. Looking down the left-hand side, you'll see the different years. So in the first column going down, we have our third-grade students. When they took the test back in 2015, we had thirteen percent of those students who were meeting and exceeding expectations. That same cohort of students, when they got to fourth grade, they had gone up to twenty-five percent. And when they got to fifth grade, they had gone up to thirty percent. Now, be mindful of the fact that these scores can't be precise, because we do have students transferring in and out of the district all the time. But it's interesting to look at these grade-level cohorts and as they progress toward the different, through the different grades. Now, when we get up through high school, it becomes a little more difficult to track these students, especially in mathematics, because students aren't necessarily taking the ELA course or English Language Arts course for their grade level. However, this is data that we have never been able to look at before, and as you go across the bottom, you can see the growth in each of these cohorts. Now, this is a slide that we've already seen for English Language Arts, and we're going to look at it for mathematics now. And you can see that we have the different levels going across the top, indicating Levels One through Five, the grades going down the left-hand side, students for mathematics over a three-year period. Again, let's make this a little easier to look at, and when we look at those students meeting and exceeding expectations over three years, we look at two different pieces. Again, it's the growth over two years and the growth over three years. And as we look at the different grade levels, we can see, indicated in green, are those areas where students have gone up percentage points across grades, and where we have lost percentage points, students have not progressed or their scores have gone down across grades. Now, you've already seen the slide where I've compared cohorts of students, which were the same group of students or very close to the same group of students as they go through the grade. Be mindful that when you look at this slide, we're looking at three different third-grade classes, three different fourth-grade classes. So in looking at this slide, we can see that the trend over the past three years overall has been very good in grades three through most of our high school years, but it's very important to realize that there are some areas for improvement. We noticed that in grade eight, grade four, Algebra II, these are all areas that we are looking very closely at our curriculum. We're working with administrators, teachers, and our teachers are working with our students to increase rigor and make some changes that I'm going to talk about a little later in the presentation. This is a slide again where we're looking at cohorts of students, and for mathematics, we're looking at these students across three different grades. Looking at the left-hand side, you'll see that these students are progressing from 2015, going through three grade levels, down to this past spring in 2017. And you can see that there are several areas where we can really get some good information about these groups of students. We can see that in the first column, our students that started taking the assessment in third grade and the student took them in fifth grade, that group has gone up seven percentage points. But we look at other cohorts of students, and we're seeing that there weren't as many students meeting grade-level expectations in math. This is a very important piece for us to look at, so we need to be mindful of the fact that we are doing the right thing by taking a closer look at our math assessments, by looking at the math instruction in the classroom, but we also want to note that there is progress. There is progress. So we're moving in the right direction, and we see that there are students who have a lot to be proud of in this district. We need to be realistic about the changes that need to be made. So now, we're looking at another slide with data for English Language Arts, and this data is comparing our district's data to the state data. So it'll give you the average across the state. Again, across the top, you'll see Again, across the top, you'll see the different levels of expectations. And going down the left-hand side again, English Language Arts, we have the grade levels listed on the left, from grade three to grade eleven. Now, when we compare the state data in levels one and two, we want New Brunswick data to be less than the state average. That means that we want less students in our district to be at levels one and two than the state has. Right now, we're about ten to fifteen percentage points off from the state in those grade levels. Additionally, when we look at levels four and five, which are the meeting expectations and exceeding expectations, we want those numbers to be higher than the state average. The area of opportunity is the area that we see right in the middle. This area is the students who are approaching expectations. I call that the students that are almost there. Those are the students that we want to push to the meeting expectations category. And if you notice, a good portion of the New Brunswick students are approaching expectations or almost there. Similarly, we can look at the data in math as well. The students in levels one and two, we want the state data to be higher than the district data. We want our numbers to be lower than the state data in not yet meeting or partially meeting expectations. And in the meeting expectations and exceeding, we want our numbers to be higher than the state average. Once again, we have that area where the students are approaching expectations for each grade level. That's our area of opportunity. So then, after we look at this data, it's important for us all to reflect. And when we reflect on this data, we have to remember that PARC data is just a piece of each student. And what I mean by that is there are so many other things that we look at to talk about a student's success, their achievement, and their progress as well. Now, when we're looking at this data and when we look at all data, we ask these questions. We want to identify strengths and gaps that exist in our curriculum. And I started to talk to you a little bit about that already. Additionally, we want to use this data as a tool. We want to improve any areas of need, enhance any areas of the curriculum that need to be. And then finally, we need to consider the initiatives and current practices that we're already using that ensure success for all students. So in reflecting on these questions, it brings us to a tool that we've been using across the district. And it's a tool that's provided to us by PARC, by the PARC assessment. And this is called a PARC evidence statement. We're providing these evidence statements in both English Language Arts and Math across each grade level. Administrators, teachers have all sat down and looked at these PARC evidence statements in detail. And let me explain to you some of the information that we can get from these evidence statements. If you notice, the green circles, that indicates our district. The small red triangles are what we call cross-states. Those are all of the states who have taken the PARC assessment, all eight of them. And then the blue squares are the state average. If you look across the bottom, this indicates the questions on the test. And they're listed across the bottom numbered from most difficult to easiest. And then very small at the bottom, you can see the standards that are attached to each question. So when we look at this data, we can see where our district fell on each particular question based on the cross-states and based on the state of New Jersey. This is a very important piece of information for us because we're finally able to go back and see what standards we were able to hit, what were we able to teach our students effectively so that they could apply it on this assessment. Additionally, we could also go back and see where our students were struggling. There's another tool that goes along with this, where we can actually pull up samples of the assessment, and we can see sample questions and see where our students actually struggled within the assessment. One of the other considerations that we've made with curriculum and instruction are the importance of learning connections. Now, research shows that when we integrate learning, students are able to acquire knowledge much easier. And that's something that we've already started doing at the iSteam Academy here in the high school. This iSteam Academy is set up for some of our freshman students. And students go through different classes, and it's all theme-based with a STEAM approach. STEAM is science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And the theme across this school year for our iSteam Academy is Mission to Mars. The iSteam Academy isn't the only initiative that we had in this district to ensure success. All of our content areas are working to increase achievement and rigor for our students. Our Humanities Department, which includes English Language Arts and Social Studies, have been revising all curriculum, like I stated earlier. They're implementing high-level tasks, and they're aligning to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, which were just officially rolled out to begin this September. In mathematics, we're using a conceptual-based model, where students are now modeling and reasoning their way through math. And they're being provided real-world problems. So when you learn something in math, you have to be able to apply it to the real world. In science, we've revised all of the K-12 curriculum to align to the Next Generation Science Standards. And the iSteam Academy and the Summer Bridge programs are two fantastic programs that are coming out of this department. In the arts, we're providing students with opportunities to create, to perform, and respond to works of art. We're working with district partnerships, and I can certainly say that the arts are something that we're very proud of in New Brunswick Public Schools. Our bilingual department has started a dual-language program at Red Shaw School. And we have even had students who were given the Seal of Biliteracy. We had forty-nine students last year, and we're going to have students testing for the Seal of Biliteracy again this year. In PE and Health, we have students who are scoring themselves and their participation in their physical education classes. We're using small-group instruction there so they have more time on task and they can maximize their participation in this class. In Instructional Technology, we're moving toward having future-ready schools. And I'm proud to recognize Lincoln Annex who received recognition as our first district future-ready school. And they'll be recognized at school boards down in Atlantic City next week. We had the Sprint One Million Grant provided for our freshmen here at the New Brunswick High School, where three hundred students were given devices so that they could access Wi-Fi at home and have access to Wi-Fi for their technology. We have many other educational support programs and software in every content area that we have for our teachers and students. And then finally, and maybe most importantly, are the interventions that we're providing for our students. We're working with New Jersey for the tiered system of supports. But part of the reason why we're talking about this data and having these conversations is so that we can provide our students with the help that they need so that they can be successful and achieve. So this quote, if you just stop and read it for a minute, is very important, and it's really what we stand for here. "Do the best you can until you know better. Then when you know better, do better." And this is what we do here in New Brunswick. We learn, we assess, we analyze, we reflect, and we raise the bar for our students. We want excellence for all students. And we know we can get there. So as I look out on this sea of smiling faces, this is the part of the presentation where we get to recognize some of the excellence in this room. Now, when I was presenting earlier, I was pointing out that there are five levels to the PARC assessment. The students that we have invited here tonight are students that have achieved that Level Five performance level. Level Five isn't just meeting expectations for end-of-the-grade level standards. Level Five is exceeding these expectations. So we have several students in the audience today that we're going to call up on stage. And we'd like to recognize you for your incredible work in the PARC assessments. So we're going to call each principal up so you can recognize the students who are exceeding expectations in your school. Now, when you see the slides behind me, you'll see students' names listed. Students' names who are indicated in red have received exceeding expectations not in just one part of the PARC assessment, ELA or Math. They've received it in both sections. So the first principal I would like to call up is Ms. Abdul Salam for Red Shaw School. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to let Ms. Abdul Salam read the names before you, and then we're going to clap for all of the students at the end. So we're asking you to hold your applause until all of the names have been read.
Congratulations to the following students for exceeding expectations on the PARC assessments. Students, when you hear your name, please come forward to receive your certificate. Jeremiah Beres. Eric Estrada Sanchez. Briani Penac Tovarres. Javier Pimentel Ruiz. Alexis Ramirez Carrera. Amy Reyes Alvarado. Almarani Reyes Martinez. And Betsy Rodriguez Nicholas.
Now, I'd like to call up Ms. Dobson. Present your students exceeding expectations on the PARC assessment. Students, when you hear your name, please come up on stage.
I'm very happy to recognize a very long list of students who attended Lincoln College School and the Academy of the Gifted and Talented at Lincoln College School. Jimmy Aguilar Luna. Megan Bravo Martinez. Heidi Alvaro. Angel Castro Jimenez. Jorge Zabaios. Anastasia Zemitska. Elias Chudula Garcia. Elijah Flores. Catherine Franco. Christopher Garcia Ramirez. Marionella Roger Castillo. Rachel Hernandez Rosanto. Rachel Hernandez Rosanto. Madeline Hernandez Muñoz. Alexander Pusuna. Johan Rivas. Valeria Roman. Joshua Vasquez.
I apologize. Mr. Negron, please come up for Livingston School. For our school, we know we missed you for a photo opportunity, so we are going to call
Angelo Chikaruma Prata.
you up at the end. Okay, Red Shaw School, come on up now for a photo. Any students that were called up for Red Shaw School? Please come forward to the stage again, and Ms. Abdul Salam.
Enyire Caleb Altera Maldonado.
And next up is Ms. Tredway for Lord Sterling School. I'm extremely proud to recognize the students from Lord Sterling School. The first student is Mervin Montesino Aranjanas. I'd like to call Ms. Rodriguez for McKinley Community School.
Congratulations to the following students. Aisha Moreno Aguirre Aguilar.
And Mr. Morey will present the students from Paul Robinson Community Theme School for the Arts.
I'd recognize Nicholas Rojas Lopez. And Mariana Feliz Juarez.
Ms. Gonzalez Hugo for Roosevelt School.
Congratulations to all the students receiving the award this evening. I am honored to announce the students from Roosevelt School.
On behalf of the Woodrow Wilson team, please accept the following students as the level five. And Francisco Vicorino Herrera.
Well, Mr. Clifford has her cut out for him. New Brunswick Middle School.
New Brunswick Middle School, very proud of the following students. Emily Patrick A. Wino. Emily Patrick A. Wino. the head of Brunswick, and Claudia Bogiozco, the looking at the... Jeremy Alberto. Laura Pasternak. Eduardo Benton Cortiera. Ashley Begon. Emily Patrick A. Wino. Brian Cervantes Avila. Davis Gallardo Diaz. Rosanit Guzmansalas. Kimberly Hernandez. Diana Isador. Lemdan Kurtzmaier. Brian Latham. Jason Leon. Emily Una Salinas. Roland Lindosa. And Nachio Marino Rafael. Amorani Morales Apariicio. Oscar Antonio Arrosa. Angelica Parales. Evelyn Ponce. Abel Ramirez Reyes. Luciana Rodriguez Concepcion. Oscar Rojas Sarmiento. Harley Romero de Santiago. Leslie Roque Chavez. Mayeli Rosales. Joseline Salmarra. Daisy Sanchez Garcia. Marco Sanchez. Eric Vasquez Sosa. Laura Velasco Chavez. Kevin Velasco Mejia. And Joseph Parris.
Alright, parents, we do only have a few more schools, so I'm going to ask that everyone please stay in your seats because we do have a few other awards that we would like to share at the end. So, we have Mr. Redler who is ready to come up.
Good evening. I am extremely proud to recognize the following 59 New Brunswick High School students who came to school and showed what they really thought expected. When I call your name, please come up to the stage. Wendy Abrego Ortega. Chelsea Acosta. Arasol Aguirre Torres. Maya Anim. David Arabalo. Doris Abia Penado. Susan Badia. Susan Arico. Zupari Beltran. Rizelda Benton Court. Zion Blanco. Chamarr Brim. Toby Caballero Herrera. Cindy Carvajo Rojos. Norma Cervantes. Rochelle Cruz. Emilad Diego Santos. Laura Flores Otunias. Karen Fuentes. Jan Marie Garcia. Jessie Garcia. Christopher Gomez Martinez. Doce Grana Martinez. Maria Del Carmen Hernandez Garcia. Peredinaña Herrera. Christopher Palentes. Minel Lucero. Mixty Joselyn Luna Florencio. Kirsten Martinez. Williams Mejia Por Prero. Maydi Nenevar Bensinte. Oasis Nchaka Vivar. John McCollay. Iris Lady Nivar. Trinity Nunez Grant. Joan Nunez. Ryan Arrasto Gomez. Naslin Ortiz Arana. Brian Palmo Marina. Junior Penha. Lisbeth Peralta. Chadé Peters. Nureli Rabia Estevez. Maria Jose Reyes Santos. Tamari Rohaman. Angel Sudara. Kenasia Sarat. Zoe Chirr. Denise Sumato. And Yvette Tavares. Tiffany Tejeda. Montanares. Ashley Torres. Andrew Trujillo. Johanna Vasquez Flores. Jennifer Velasco. Hugo Vivas de la Santos. Jacqueline Jauvah Osalat. Jere Yanez. And Kevin Zarate. Congratulations, very proud.
Now, we'd like to ask Mr. Penelli from the Health Sciences Tech High School.
Mohamed Amey. Lisette Andrade. Nicole Arias Andawala. Andy Pabloina Garcia. Maria Benitez. Mary Carmen Bravo Martinez. Anna Camacho Lazada. Sarah Clinic. Janaye Dover. Catherine Herrera. Miguel Melena Figuera. Jayla Graves. Brandon Jimenez Castillo. Samantha Jones. Thomas Wall. Alicia Lopez. Samantha Maygru. Katherine Mejia Zangia. Salimar Portillo. Mary Bella Ramirez Cantorán. Alexis Ramirez España. Yapzari Robles Vasquez. Norma Rodriguez Ortiz. Ariana Tavares. Marvin Valentine. Chloe Yu.
We're going to have Mr. Clifford come back up. He has one student that he would like to call up.
Brian Perez.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, the part assessment was not the only assessment that was given last spring. There were two other assessments that were given as well. To our 4th and 8th grade students, they took the New Jersey Ask Science Assessment, and we had 114 students who were advanced proficient in this assessment. Let's give those students a round of applause. The other assessment that was given to our high school sophomores for science is the New Jersey Biology Competency Test. Last spring, we had 14 students that were advanced proficient on this assessment. Let's give them a round of applause as well. When those students go to school tomorrow, their principals will have a special certificate for each of them. But we need to recognize students who received a perfect score on one of these two assessments. But we need to recognize students who received a perfect score on one of these two assessments. We have the following students we're going to ask to come up to the stage to receive a special pin that says "Exceeding Expectations" with a star on it. Those students are: Palina Lazaré. Maya Mercia. Carla Mercia. Deandra Peralta. Natalie Perez Bo Kusman. Roger Vasquez. And Thomas Wall. So, perfect score on the Science Assessment. We have two more awards to give tonight. The next award are for three students that we'd like to recognize that were exceeding expectations on not just the English Language Arts portion of the PARC assessment, not just the mathematics portion of the PARC assessment, but on the New Jersey ASK Science Assessment as well. These three students scored exceeding expectations on all three assessments. And those students are: Elijah Corras. Taylor Rodrigo Navarro. And finally, we have one other award to give out today. And this award is for excellence. We had one student in our district who received a perfect score on the PARC ELA portion of the assessment. This student-
Dre.
-was an 11th grade student who goes to New Brunswick High School. And her name is Susan Badiya. Now, Ms. Badiya didn't make it up here by herself. There were 12 teachers who have taught her English Language Arts over the past 12 years, who we would like to invite some of those teachers up here today. Would you like to give the teachers names? Ready?
Alright, for kindergarten, I'm just gonna call her Ms. Brand Soli. And then for first grade, Ms. Rukrat. For second grade, Ms. DeBord. For third, Ms. Rosa. For fourth, Ms. Wilkins. For fifth, Ms. Ratchet or Ms. Eisen. For sixth, Ms. Van Dulce. For seventh, Ms. Moore. For eighth, Ms. Vogt. For ninth, Ms. Luzy. For 10th, Ms. Graham. And for 11th, Ms. Fattison.
And the other person that we'd like to call up here is Susan's mom. It's Tanya Santos. Please step to the stage. So, ladies and gentlemen, as you can see, it does take a true team and a true village to move towards student achievement. And we did have other teachers who were instrumental in the perfect scores of the students that we have here in New Brunswick. And they will receive letters from all of us, and we also want to appreciate them as well. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, and I want to most of all thank our school board. We have certainly started to experience some positive change in this district. And I can say that we have such a supportive Child Center Board of Education who never hesitates to put students first. So, thank you so much for the work and service that you do for our district.
I'll be brief. I'm just gonna be straightforward. We still have a lot of work to do. We still need to work hard. Because in the world that we live in today, there's definitely a need for change. As Ms. Kusma said, we have a board here that holds us accountable, the administrators, teachers, the principals, to ensure that we provide your children with a proper, thorough, and efficient education. A lot of times we look at school structures, and you know, a school is just a building with four walls. But inside, there's promise. And today, today, this evening, we witness the promise. We also recognize the hard work that our teachers do, day in and day out. But most importantly, we need to recognize our parents and guardians here tonight. Students, let's give them a round of applause for everything they've done. Parents, guardians, uncles, aunts, brothers, abuelitas. I need you to stay with them. I call it the P-16 push, 16 years from pre-K to when they finish college. I need you to work with them and coach them, and keep on pushing them. Do not stop. Keep the pressure. Let them know that they are gonna do something purposeful to make a change, to make an impactful change. Students here, your job is not done. I advise you to keep on exceeding expectations. But what I want you to do starting tomorrow is when you go back to class, help some of your classmates. You have the skills. You understand the content. I want you to go and find some of your classmates that need a little bit more assistance and help them with their study. Sometimes you may have to shake them up and say, "Hey, stop playing around in class. We're losing information today." Let them know the purpose. You have that purpose. You have that drive. Let's not let the days go on, because what happened yesterday, we can never go back again. Go back in those classrooms tomorrow and find those students that you know you can help, and even the ones that don't even want to listen. Pick them up, pull them along, and show them, "This is how we're gonna get it done, because we're only gonna do this as a family." Again, thank you. It was a pleasure. Just keep up the hard work. We still have a lot to accomplish.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. We took a lot of time to do this, but this is what the district is about. Just so you know, and we reiterate, New Jersey is typically number one or two when it comes to standardized testing in the country. So, the students before you are among the best students in the country here in New Brunswick. They can do well anywhere. So, next time anybody talks about New Brunswick, I want you to stand up and say, "We saw over 250 students who are the best in the country," so be very, very proud. Moving on to item number four of the minutes. Is there a motion to accept the September 19 minutes? Okay, go call, please. Yes. Thank you. Item number five, the superintendent's report. Dr. Johnson.
Yes. For the month of September, there were 41 district-wide suspensions. There was... There was zero cases of HIV bullying reports. Our October enrollment, excuse me, our September enrollment is 10,295 students. Our student attendance rate was at 96%, and our staff attendance rate was at 98%. That concludes my answer.
Second, go call, please. Yes. Okay, item number six, the Outstanding Scholar Report.
So, October marks the first complete month of school, and as we're already halfway through, our students are actually still showing the same energy they demonstrated in September. Students are getting to their classes on time and making their transition smooth while doing so. School at New Brunswick High School starts officially at 8:00 a.m. By 7:55, our halls are already looking almost completely cleared out, which is amazing. This goes to show that attendance from class to class is being greatly improved. In terms of academics, our PSAT testing took place on October 11th, with most of our sophomores, I believe, taking that test. In terms of school activities, the first phase of Sprint, of the Sprint One Million Project, providing cellular devices to our freshmen, the hotspot internet devices took place September 25th and 26th. During this phase, 227 students received activated devices, took the pledge of digital citizenship, and walked out of this event with the power to connect to the internet no matter where they are. On October 13th, our technology department and high school staff completed the second phase of this project, distributing a total of 280 Sprint devices to students. Future projects and assemblies have been planned out for these students in order to educate them on endless possibilities that they have with these new devices, which they will be taking home and utilizing to turn in assessments online. Our senior convocation took place on October 12th, and almost all of our 418 seniors attended the event, which was a great turnout. On Saturday, October 14th, our very own high school held the College Knowledge Workshop offered by the UNFC Newark in partnership with the American Baptist Churches of New Jersey. Many of our students attended the workshop, and our very own Play Smart coach, Mr. Harris, was there to fully assist, as well as other coaches. So, we did have that support from our high school in our high school. We had our students show up, be very intrigued into the data, and actually get something from that workshop, which they did take to school on Monday, as I did hear conversations around the building about this workshop, so that was great. Many schools have begun visiting our building. Already well into October, we have seen Cladwell, Barkers New Brunswick, Barkers Newark, Princeton, and many more coming in, Ramapo, Ryder, etc. So, we're very excited about that, and we hope all of our seniors do get to attend these special events. In terms of Play Smart, I want to give them a special spotlight. It has begun once more. It is now focusing on our seniors who have started their college applications. And as times do get rough with these applications, Play Smart has ran college workshops for them, has determined plans for them, has kept them on the right track, set up meetings with them. And it's really great to see our student athletes offseason and on-season dedicated to their, what they have to do both in that sport and outside of that sport. So, it's great to see that support from these Play Smart coaches, trying to get them on the right track, keeping them focused on their GPA, financial aid, teaching them about scholarships. It's just really great to see that happening early on, so these student athletes can go on and educate other students in the building that may or may not know of these certain things. So, that's very wonderful to see. And in terms of the middle school, the middle school hosted a Sister Cities delegation from Fukui, Japan on October 6th, and that was also great. And that is all I have to represent for October 2017. And that is all I have to represent for October 2013. Thank you.
Thank you for that outstanding report. Item number seven, the facilities committee report. Mr. Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Paul Brooks Community School for the Arts is ongoing. We're on schedule. We'll probably exceed the time that we were expecting to finish the school. But I will report on that as we go through the whole process of the construction. As far as the annual boiler inspections are currently in progress for all the schools throughout the district. And we're working with Onyx, our renewable partners, to design and install additional solar panels, roof-mounted, and parking lot systems. As far as the boiler testing, the last four drinking water locations have been repaired and will be scheduled for testing. For further information regarding the water testing, I would tell you to refer to our website. It will give you detailed information as soon as we get the results. That, Mr. President, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Policy committee report, Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, Mr. President. The policy committee did not move for the move October. Therefore, there's no report to yet. Thank you.
Thank you. The athletic committee report.
Yes. The athletic committee met earlier this afternoon. The first thing on our agenda, Susan just spoke briefly about the Play It Smart program. And that is a mandatory study hall program for all athletes. And we also have content teachers that are available to our students to help keep up their GPAs. And there seemed to be a little confusion about the grade point average. And the grade point average has been 2.0 as a rule for all athletes. So moms, dads, grandparents, aunts, uncles, if you're here, just know that your student is required, if they want to play sports at New Brunswick High School and the Health Science Technology High School, they must be reporting to Play It Smart for mandatory tutoring or mandatory study hall. And that rule has been reinforced by the athletic committee and this board, and there'll be no change in that rule. One good thing is that we now have the Play It Smart program in our middle school. So our athletes in the middle school know what is expected of them as they move on up to the high school. And it should help things along so that we don't get that gap, like, "Oh, my goodness, in my junior year, I messed up in my freshman year." Can't mess up. It's too important. As one of our more famous zebras says, "If you have your good person, you have the grades, and you are an athlete. But if your athletic career goes away, and you have those good grades, and you're the good person, you're still going to succeed in life." And that's what Play It Smart is all about. Also, they're going to institute a program for Play It Smart. It's going to be called the Zebracup. And there's going to be a trophy involved. And the athletic team here at New Brunswick High School that has the highest team GPA will either have a pizza party, they will win a trophy, or have a pizza party, ice cream party, whatever. There'll be some foods to enjoy if they win that highest GPA award. There will be a girls' basketball varsity Christmas tournament that will be held here at New Brunswick High School on the 27th and 28th of December over the Christmas holidays. So if you're off from school or off from work, and you want to stop by and see some good basketball, please come by. The Martin Luther King Basketball Classic for the boys will be held during the Martin Luther King Holiday in January 2018. Again, if you're not working, you're off from school, come out and enjoy some really good basketball. I do need a motion to accept the athletic bank reconciliation report.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Hush. Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer. Mrs. Morella.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell. Yes. Motion approved. Item number 10, the curriculum committee report. Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, the curriculum committee met on Tuesday, October 3. We had a presentation. The New Bilingual ESL handbook was introduced by Dr. Andrea Fontanas. The handbook is a three-year plan, basically detailing the instructions that the bilingual program is going to be given to our students from K to fifth grade, based on the level of education or knowledge, or what grade level they're in when they come to our district. If they basically don't speak any English and are not at the grade level in Spanish, then they will get certain time, block of time, in their own language to bring them up to par at their grade level. And then they'll split the time with students that are English dominant, and they will interact with each other. Hopefully, with this rigorous type of instruction, our students will be able to exit out of the bilingual program a lot faster and go into the mainstream instruction at the school's general population. So I think it's a very intensive initiative. And I think that it's going to be very progressive, very rigorous. And I think our students are going to be the better for it. So basically, that's what this three-year plan says. We also had bilingual ESL and Spanish 1 and 2 textbooks that'll back this up. The rest of our meeting was on resolutions, of which are the conservative items. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. The public relations committee report, Mrs. Diana Sullivan.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. I'd like to report that the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee will host a meeting at Lord Sterling Community School on Monday, October 23, at 6:00 p.m. to discuss parenting and discipline. Next week are the parent-teacher conferences, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, where all of our schools and preschool centers will have early dismissals. Please don't forget to pick up your children on time. And on Saturday, November 18, the New Brunswick Public Schools will be hosting an EdCamp New Jersey 2017 at the New Brunswick High School. It is free to the educational professionals that attend. Since EdCamp, since the first EdCamp event in 2010, there have been over 1,500 EdCamps in 35 countries. Some camps draw as many as 1,000 attendees. This is something that is participant-driven, free to all attendees. And all are encouraged to attend. This is just for educational professionals, correct? Okay, so educational professionals in the building, Saturday, November 18, here at the high school. It'll be from 8:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. Be there or be square. That is my report. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you for that support. Be there or be square. All right, item number 12, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. The only thing I'll report on tonight is, one, as some of you may know, we have a special relationship between the commission and the school board. And we are actually presenting at the school board's conference about that relationship next Tuesday. What time, Dr. Johnson? 10 o'clock. So the superintendent of the ESCNJ, Mr. Finkelstein, Dr. Johnson, and myself will be presenting and really sharing with the world our relationship. So that's very, very exciting. Item number 13, the president's report. I mean, I think what we saw today, and I compliment Dr. Johnson, his staff, his team, we are celebrating excellence here. You know, not at the exclusion of students that are struggling, but we believe that every student can not only learn, but every student can be exceptional, can be excellent. And so we need you. This is a collaboration with the community. It's a collaboration with the media. It's a collaboration with everyone to really get people to believe that they can be excellent. And so often, we have the outside world telling us, "Well, New Brunswick's an urban school. They don't send kids to Hungary. They don't have kids going to Princeton and Cornell. They don't have kids that are above proficient on the test." We have to change that narrative, because that narrative is wrong. And so I am so excited to be part of the district at this particular time. I hope you're as excited to be part of the teaching staff and part of the community, parents and students. So let's make it happen. So with that, item number 14, the public comments. If you could come up and say your name and address if you have any questions.
Hi, my name's Gretchen Harvey. This is not related to anything that you've been discussing so far, so I'm not sure it comes standing up at the right time to speak or not.
Your address?
I'm a hygienist. I live... I'm a hygienist with Thunder Smiles for Kids Dental Office there on How Lane in New Brunswick, right on the border there. Okay? So I'm going to keep this as brief as possible. Dr. Maxola of the Thunder Smiles for Kids has started bringing dentistry into the schools in hopes of providing dental care for any children that would like to be sane or any parents who would like to have their children sane. Some of the services that we provide are exams, cleanings, x-rays, sealants, and fluorine. Dr. Max is head of NJ Pediatric Dental Health, and he also is on the Oral Health Coalition. He's very compassionate, ethical, caring, and dedicated to providing positive dental experiences for any of the children that he treats. Nurses would like to have us in their schools. Parents want us. We want to be here and provide preventive dental services to your students if that's something that they're interested in. There is a direct correlation between good oral health and academic performance. Can you imagine trying to take a standardized part test with an excruciating tooth pain or even trying to concentrate on daily classroom lessons with poor physical health or toothache? So this program costs the district absolutely nothing. A team of dentists and two hygienists come into the school, unpack the stuff. Nurses distribute permission slips. I have one here. We'd like to look at it. Parents fill the permission slips out. And when they come to the school, we say the children who are on the list. Dr. Max takes every New Jersey Family Care insurance, as well as many, many private insurances. There is also a self-pay option. If somebody wanted to do that, that's an option. And there are also charity care/grant options for people who don't have insurance, can afford to pay. So nobody's going to really service. The only time, I think, most limited, people would not be seen is if they've already been to a dentist. And right on a permission slip at the very top, it says, "If you have a regular dentist, no need to fill this out." We're not trying to see those people. We're trying to bring care to people who can't get to a dentist, don't have a dentist, or whatever. Parents don't want to take off from work. Anyway. So I don't know what the next step is. If this is something that you can all consider right now and give me answer on, or if it's something that you have to think about and let me know. But I'd like to give you my information and have you consider it.
Dr. Johnson, thank you so much for coming. We accept any, as much free support as we can get. But Dr. Johnson, has a problem?
Just seeing this melanoma at the door right there, you can share your information if we'll get in touch with you.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming out tonight. I, at one time, was executive director of the Newark Alliance, and I nailed the number. And one of the numbers that started was that 70% of the students in Newark did not have adequate dental care. And that was an impediment for their academic and life success. So thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Redsher.
Good evening, members of the board. Charles Cradville. You know me. I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today. I'm the New Brunswick resident. Start by thanking... Thank you for that thorough presentation. I assume that would be put on the website? Okay, thank you. And I do want to thank Mr. Jan Aron for helping me obtain some documents through the Open Public Records Act. Appreciate that. I have a few more general questions, but first I want to ask about a few agenda items. The new contract, apparently, for the superintendent. What prompted the new contract?
I'm going to try to respond.
Yeah, we were approaching December, where we have to make a decision on extending the contract or terminating it because it expires next June. But you have almost a six-month period where you have to let the superintendent know. The board started discussing that in August and September. And they made the decision to enter into a new long-term contract of five years, dating back to July 1, because that's what the law said. You can't have a contract start in the middle of any year. It has to go from July 1 to June 30 of a given year. They had an option of a three-year contract or a five-year. They opted for a five-year. The compensation is $196, with the potential to make another $25,000 with incentive bonuses. The contract, once it was authorized by the board in closed session, it was presented to the county superintendent for approval. We got that approval a couple of weeks ago, and it was put on tonight. And the protocol is to rescind the existing contract and enter into the new contract. So that's the history, and that's what the board intends to do tonight.
Understood. So the pay-off will take effect right away?
Yeah, it takes effect, effective actually, July 1 of 2017. The bonuses won't take effect until they're articulated between the board and the superintendent, and they're achieved.
Okay, so the board felt it was appropriate to give a retroactive pay raise?
No, that's the law. It can only go one way, forward or backward. It has to always start in July, so that's what they decided to do.
That's the fiscal year, and that's the legal. But let me talk about the practical term. Is that, I've been on the board since 1998, in September of 1998. And I will say that the culture that Dr. Johnson has created, the child-centered culture, the collaboration, the focus on excellence, is something that I value and I've not seen at this level in the time I've been here. And so we wanted to make sure that we kept him. We had a relationship with him. We're making great progress in the district. We have a long way to go, as you heard Dr. Johnson say, but we're very, very proud to make this change to his contract. So he's going to be with us for the foreseeable future. That's why we did it.
Okay, fair enough. It's a small thing, but would Dr. Johnson be able to unblock me on Twitter?
We'll take that under advisement.
If he's going to be here for another five years, I intend to be here as well. You know, just be a nice gesture.
You don't block. I don't block you, Trump. So you can send me, you know.
I just think it would be good to open the lines of communication, and you know, it may be potentially illegal to re-blocking the president's. Can I hear about Resolution K, OFAC? Is this the same one that was rattled out at a previous meeting? Or is this a new corrective action plan for a new OFAC issue?
Richard?
No, that's a new OFAC audit for access, ELL testing, that I'll speak to when we get to the agenda.
Okay. Resolution AL, is it a district improvement plan that you sack monitoring? Is that going to be addressed as well? Or could you address it now, real quick?
Mr. Jan Aron?
Yes, that will be addressed, but I'll answer it now. The district improvement plan, as you know, last year, we were monitored by the State Department of Education. And we got 100% in all areas, other than curriculum and instruction. And in that area, we have developed a corrective action plan. And in that area, we have developed a corrective action plan per NJ DOE guidelines, and the board is approving it, and will be implementing it and submitting it to the Department of Education for approval.
Okay, and will that be put on the website as well, or is there, should I open that? Is that going to be, I don't think it's attached here.
You can send me a request, I'll send it to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, and so just a few general questions. The pre-K enrollment, is there a final figure now for the district? For the October 15th?
I apologize, I did not bring that exact number as of today.
Okay, I'll follow up. I wanted to ask about the issue, it's a real issue in New Brunswick, gangs. And I want to know what the district is doing about that issue. I know, I'm familiar, vaguely familiar with the great program that is, I guess, educating students about gangs. But I wanted to know, is there anything done for parents to inform them about that problem and how they can try to avoid it?
You want to just?
Yeah. Pretending to your question, I think that's a great strategy. So we're going to take that under advisement and start to do some things for our parents. We do have conversations many times, we do, I do, we see phone calls from parents in my office regarding, you know, what are we doing in schools, and we do have some programs in schools and assemblies as well. But there may be a sense of awareness where we can probably do a little better and actually bring some parents in to talk about it, and give them some support and look for, so that's an idea that we'll definitely think is really worthwhile.
Thanks for saying that, and, you know, I'm not an expert on the problem, but I, you know, do run a newspaper, be happy to spread the word if there's anything that you're doing that you want me to spread the word about, you know where to find me. And, okay, so two other issues. One of the greatest days of my year last year was getting the opportunity to speak at McKinley Career Day, and it was just such a, you know, great experience for the kids. I could tell that they were being inspired, not necessarily for me, but so many of the other people who were there. But it was a great experience for me, and I wanted to ask, you know, does every school have a career day? Is there a career fair for folks, you know, above K through 8 or anything like that? I think those programs are beneficial.
Kathy?
Yeah, I think we have a program. Do you want to take that?
Yes, the majority of the schools do have a career day.
Okay, well, I would...
And that information would be posted on the website, and it's usually around the springtime.
Right on, okay. Well, I certainly call up through my services to teach students about the opportunities with journalism, it's a, you know, a really exciting field these days, and I always appreciate the opportunity to speak to students. So last question I want to ask about is tax exemptions under the long-term tax exemption law in New Jersey. You know, New Brunswick is one of the cities that's taken advantage of that more than any other, and as a result, a decent amount of the land in New Brunswick is exempted under these agreements, sometimes referred to as decents. And as a result, those properties typically pay nothing into the school system through traditional school taxes. Basically, it shifts where the money goes. There's still some money being paid, they're not getting zero taxes, but they're getting a discount on taxes, and the vast majority of it goes to the city and small chunk to the county. And unlike traditional property taxes, none of it goes to the school system. The city this year has approved three different proposed buildings for tax exemptions. Some of those buildings may indeed one day house students that will use the services of the district. I wanted to ask the board for your perspective on these agreements, and whether you think that they are having a negative financial impact on the district.
We'll try, I think you're talking about payments in lieu of taxes, pilots.
Sure.
Is really what the, you know, so they are paying something. I don't think we have a comment on that, I mean, there's some legal issues and some other things. I used to be Deputy Commissioner of Department of Community Affairs, so I know very well, you know, the impact of those things, but those are, as you would suspect, very much beyond our control. As a school board, we don't do anything about that, so we really don't have a comment.
Okay, well, sadly, yes, the board has no direct input on those decisions, they're made by the city council and the mayor, and I'm sure some of you guys know people in the city council and the mayor, and, you know, I personally feel that they are setting up a bad financial situation, especially when they're for such a long period of time, the city almost always approves them for 30-year exemptions, and, you know, it's hard to say what, you know, what the population of children might be in a particular building, you know, 20 or 30 years down the road. I think agreeing to let developers get off the hook without paying anything into the schools is a bad, a bad deal for the schools. And so I hope that you'll look into it and consider, you know, trying to keep those agreements from having a negative effect on the district. And thank you for the time.
Thanks for your comments, Dr. Johnson. Any other comments? Say your name and address.
Hi, my name is Zoe Shira. I'm a junior at New Brunswick High School, and I have like a, I have a brief question. We've been trying to create a male volleyball team, and it hasn't been sold through, we've been working on it for about a year, so I just want to know, like, what, like, what has to happen on it for that to come to effect?
Yeah, great, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Dr. Johnson said we'll look into it and see what we can do. We would love to have one, just as much as you.
Can I?
Yeah, there's interest, all about interest, yeah.
If I may, for the Athletic Committee, during the Athletic Committee today, that was part of our Athletic Committee, and Mr. Lowery brought it up, and we are in the final stages of implementing first a boys' volleyball club so they can turn into a team. So you will see that sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Thank you for coming and mentioning, appreciate that. Any other comments, questions? Great. Nearing done, do I hear a motion to accept the resolution?
Second.
Second, roll call, please.
What I wanted to do, though, I think I would vote separately, I would vote...
I would vote separately on the superintendent's resolutions first.
Okay, why would we take that, why would we leave that first? Item 15, the resolutions for the superintendent's contract, motion?
Some move.
Okay, second, okay, roll call.
Mr. Hush?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Chititis?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Great, thank you, congratulations. You make comment?
Yeah, I was just trying to strip a comment real quick, but first of all, I just want to say that I'm very delighted, both professionally and personally, by this new five-year agreement, so I would like to just thank the board as well. It will enable me, it will enable us, the team, the administrators, to continue the work that we're doing with the board on behalf of all the students here in New Brunswick. There's a lot to be proud of, and, you know, I cannot take credit for the things that's happened. Brunswick has had a lot of great programs and have done a lot of great things. The only thing that I can say that I've been part of is to bring it to light. However, as I said earlier, there is a lot more room for improvement, and we will continue to improve. And I'm confident that there are better things on the horizon. Thank you so much, humbly so.
Item 16, the consented, are there motions to accept resolutions A through AN? So move, second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Hush?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item number 17, the Finance Committee report. Mrs. Sadowski?
I almost forgot. Finance Committee met earlier this evening, and I need a motion to accept the Finance Committee report.
Is there a motion? So move, second?
I bet.
Okay, I mean, roll call.
Mr. Hush?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela?
Yes.
On which, on the financial report, I was staying on page 6 and page 15. So noted. Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Same?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Excellent, so the resolution for closed session, number 18. I'll read the resolution and the board will vote. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4 to 6 provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed in closed session, and whereas the board's intention intends to discuss matters as follows, one, personnel matters, two, matters of attorney-client privilege, now therefore be it resolved, the aforementioned subjects will be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff, and amendments set closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reason for the non-disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exists. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Hush?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
We are in closed session.
And we will resume as soon as possible. Thank you all.